Time having arrived, I call this meeting of the Accounts Committee to order. With me is Counselor Susan DeCastro from Ward Four, Counselor-at-Large Win Farwell. Not with us tonight, Counselor-at-Large David Texera, who is at the Citizen Police Academy, and Counselor Shirley Azak, who had a last-minute interruption and was unable to make it this evening. We'll go right into it. Good evening, Madam Auditor.
Good evening.
Number one, we have the travel and training policy, a discussion about how we handle that, so I'll let you take it away.
Sounds good. Good evening, Accounts Committee. Thank you for being with us this evening. I'd like to go over the travel and expense policy with the city, which has existed for quite some time under the authority of the CFO, and we've sort of spruced up a bit just in terms of, you know, AP, in paying bills and getting everyone to understand, you know, what we need from an auditing perspective when it comes to travel reimbursements, you know, mileage reimbursements, so on and so forth. So, this is the policy itself here. I won't read it word-for-word, but it's also available on the City Auditor's webpage under, towards the bottom, where we have all of our documentation, you know, required for our processes in the office. The reason we have controls when it comes to any kind of travel reimbursements or mileage reimbursements and so on and so forth is, well, the one main reason is that the Attorney General, not, the Inspector General's Office, you know, highlights, you know, rules and regulations when it comes to just expenditures. And it's not just something in the public sector, it's in the private sector as well. So, it's pretty common knowledge that if you are going someplace and it serves a purpose with your, you know, position, that you can be reimbursed for it if you're not, let's say, using the company car, if you will, if you're using your own. If you've got to attend conferences, you know, outside of the city, or, you know, somewhere else in the state, or even in the country, that, you know, in order to fulfill your role for that position, you know, if you need to catch a flight, you can be reimbursed for the flight. But the whole purpose of our office when it comes to sort of presenting this to the council and, I'm sorry, the committee and for everyone at home, is to understand what kind of controls we have in place when departments submit these payments to us. I'll sort of read a little blurb here, but the reason for these controls, "There are reimbursements for expenses employees incur for attending an event or make a purchase that pertains to their job so the public good can be served. They are not reimbursements for employees' private benefit." So, that's a huge sort of statement there. They're never reimbursements for an employee's private benefit, and that's where auditing comes in, to safeguard that. Employees need proper documentation to prove to the city what the expenses are for. So, that's where AP comes in. Employees need to provide us with proper documentation proving to us that this was a work-related expense, that you had to incur this expense on your own for said reasons, which is pretty common, and you need to be reimbursed for it, and you will be, if we just have that backup that's required to kind of prove that. We require receipts for registration fees, food, lodging, proof of attendance, mileage, stuff like that. Receipts have to be dated and itemized, so we can see, you know, what exactly we're reimbursing. We need to see a date on the receipt. It needs to be kind of within the realm of, okay, if you had to go to a conference in California and you have a registration for May 1st, and you, you know, you are paying for meals on your own credit card, we can reimburse meals for up to $50 a day. While, if you're providing us with a credit card receipt, or even just a receipt of that food purchase while you are there, you know, we'll look at the date, and the date can't be October of that year. It doesn't make sense to us, and that would be a red flag. Things like that. Just, I'm just trying to sort of put it in layman's terms, so it's more relatable to everyone that's watching. There needs to be basically full transparency as to what is being invoiced and if they fall into the appropriate fiscal year. So, everything needs to be, especially when we're paying out of the general fund, really, any fund really, it should always be within the same fiscal year. They can be submitted through a travel reimbursement form. We also have various forms that I wanted to show you guys quickly. All of these regulations and controls are important to alleviate any unnecessary or fraudulent expenditures, to make sure that they are reimbursable expenses per MGL, Massachusetts General Law. So, I'm going to show you guys just a series of our forms and some real-life examples of things that we get, you know, based on what our folks, you know, in the city do. So, one common travel reimbursement form is when departments, given their function in their department, need to just drive around the city and be able to do their work. We can reimburse for mileage. This is a particular mileage reimbursement with the Board of Health. Per the IRS, we can reimburse for mileage, last year it was 67 cents per every dollar, I'm sorry, per every mile driven. This year, it's gone up to 70 cents. And we require that the departments fill out these forms, you know, put a date, tell us where you went, what it was for, how many miles you traveled, and if you can see here to the far right, they do the math for us, and we check this math. So, they know, per a letter we send out every year from the IRS saying what the mileage reimbursement rate is, they know they have to multiply their miles by the 70 cents to get that total that they could be reimbursed for, so that's the expense. And then they come with a total at the bottom. We do the math ourselves, the form's signed by the traveler themselves and dated, it's signed by the department head. And thereafter, when the purchase order is presented to us for the reimbursement, this is included, and the purchase order itself is also signed by the department head, so everyone knows what's going on. Here's another example of the Buildings Department. So, they do a lot of travel throughout the city, you know, for, obviously, for inspections and stuff, and there's actually an inspector's daily log, where we require them to kind of itemize everything out, where are they going, you know, for what reason, so on and so forth with the total, it's signed, we make sure everything makes sense. These logs and this breakdown in terms of mileage reimbursements are all we require when traveling within Brockton, for employees who have to do some form of traveling and aren't using a company car, let's say. When they're traveling outside of Brockton, they're going to a conference, they're going to a seminar, anything within the realm of needing to fulfill their role, that's where we need more documentation from them. We can't just take a form with them sort of itemizing what they're doing and going where. What we require, along with the form, is, as an example, proof of registration that you've gone to the conference, okay? So, the conference is where? Let's say it's in the Cape. We need some kind of registration, whether it's via email or something showing us that you signed up for this conference. If it was paid ahead of time and you're being reimbursed, which is, you know, the way it works most of the time, you know, was that check cashed? Who sent the payment to the vendor, let's say? In this particular case, it's Plymouth Accounting Assessors Association. So, the, some of the folks at the assessor's office went to this. You know, if you received any kind of certification at the end of it for attending, you would want to include that with the documentation, it just further proves that, you know, you were there, this was work-related, everything's, you know, up to par. What we really want, though, when it comes to any kind of travel reimbursements, especially not just with vehicle, but with flights, is, I'll just start with this, vehicles, we want a Google map with the total and miles reflected, showing that you traveled to this place, it took you this, this is how many miles you traveled to get from your home or from City Hall to get there, and then we can use that as proof that this is, you know, that's the proof that you traveled this far, and then we can calculate the mileage reimbursement, and everything's great. When it comes to flights, we would need similar documentation in terms of confirming that you attended this conference, but we'd also want an itinerary, a flight itinerary. We don't need personal information, we don't need credit card numbers or anything that you charged, we'd want to see the last four digits, but we'd want proof that you took this flight, and we'd need to see some kind of itinerary showing that. So, the safeguard there when it comes to internal controls is really, is solid and valid. There have been instances where I've had to reject some travel reimbursements because we couldn't get folks to prove that they went there for work purposes. So, a typical example would be, they attended a conference in Los Angeles, they provided us with the backup, saying said conference was in San Jose. They showed us an itinerary of the flight to Los Angeles, and we got a return flight from Las Vegas. So, we've got a request for full reimbursement for the round-trip flight, and we're missing some backup. We're not seeing anything in terms of a conference or something work-related in Las Vegas. We can pay this portion of the request. We can't pay for this return flight until you can provide me with some kind of proof that you attended something work-related in Vegas. Things like that do occur, not usually, but it's more of a learning lesson for everyone to understand that, not one, just what's appropriate and inappropriate when it comes to travel reimbursements and mileage reimbursements, but the fact that it is being audited and watched, and folks need to remember that, you know, the city's not going to foot the bill if you want to take, you know, a couple extra days to go someplace else that's not work-related and then fly back home.
I have a question.
Of course.
So, in your example, they had to come back, right?
Right.
So, it sounds like they took some extra time, drove or went over to Las Vegas, didn't charge the city for the hotel or for meals or anything like that in Las Vegas, but yet we still wouldn't pay for them to come home knowing they have to come back?
No, because we can't prove that the trip to Las Vegas was work-related. If the conference was in Los Angeles, I would need some kind of documentation showing that you also did something related to your job function in Las Vegas.
They didn't have to come back from Las Vegas?
Right, exactly.
To come back from LA.
Exactly. And we give every opportunity to say, hey, listen, we're missing the stuff showing that you were doing something in Vegas or Seattle or wherever.
Okay.
And if we don't get it back, we're not paying it, if that makes sense.
Okay, I have another question. So, there's a lot of these kind of conferences and stuff in Orlando. So, somebody flies to Orlando, the conference ends on Thursday, and then they come back on Sunday.
We're watching that. We're paying attention to the dates, that's why it's important.
Okay, so...
So, what's happening, I'm sorry, time dropped.
Well, so, you know, you assume they stayed and went to the amusement parks and stuff. In that case, they still had to come back from Orlando, you have the proof they were there until Thursday. You, your requirement is for them to return promptly, or we wouldn't reimburse them for staying a couple of extra days?
I mean, depending, this is where it gets gray, but what's appropriate is, is depending on how late the conference went to. Did you catch a flight right after? Did you have time? Did you have to catch the next flight? If it's a next-day thing, we take these things on a case-by-case basis, and we think of just the rationale behind it. Did the airport shut down? Was there a flight cancellation? Most of the time when funky things like this happen, we've got a dialogue with the department, and we're talking. We're saying, what happened? We've got an extra three or some odd days here, how come it took you three days to get home when the work assignment technically ended on Thursday? And we would want to know, and we can kind of make the decision from there, if it's a rational explanation as to why they couldn't get home for another three days.
Like, if the flight was canceled?
Yeah, yeah. Everything, again, it's, this is where accounts payable gets gray. It's all, it's something that needs to be discussed, so we can understand it, and of course, we accommodate if it's reasonable.
Counselor Lally just whispered a pertinent question. What if they, it was cleared with their supervisor that they were going to take a day or two of vacation?
Well, would they have to clear, could they clear it?
Beyond...
Or would they clear it with you?
Yeah, beyond the time.
Um, if they're taking a couple, no, they wouldn't clear it with me. That would be then a discussion between myself and the department head.
Right.
Because if they're taking extra vacation time, I would be wondering why we're footing the bill for these extra two days on the flight back. That I don't understand from my viewpoint.
So, as far as you're concerned, reading this policy, they need to promptly return when the work-related event ends?
That would be my standing on it. You know, there's always room for growth there, but I can't see how I can justify, you know, vacation days are your time.
Right.
And that's where things get kind of funky.
Sure.
If, you know, it's not...
Because technically, they're returning from a day off and not from a conference.
Right. The whole purpose of the trip is to be work-related, so, again, it's not always cut, you know, cut and dry, but it, there is a level of sort of appropriateness when it comes to travel, especially within a work setting. And if you want to be reimbursed for these travel expenses, it probably makes sense to stick to business, and if there's going to be an extension, which, you know, anybody has every right to do, well, that's when things can get a little bit sticky, when you want to be reimbursed.
Okay.
For stuff that really is outside the realm of you doing your job. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are elected officials entitled to be reimbursed for mileage?
Um, I can check on that.
Yeah, that would be interesting.
We're pretty sure we get, we process.
I expect it will be no, but, you know, I think it's worth asking while we're on the topic.
Yeah. There are, like, pretty strict, can pull out my book, my big MGL book and see, there are pretty strict regulations when it comes to elected officials as opposed to actual employees, but I can check.
Well, it's a good thing I came right back from that morning conference in Rhythm recently.
Yeah. No stops at Foxwoods?
Nope.
Any other questions, Counselor?
Thank you, no.
All right, Counselor Farwell.
I think I have a couple of easy ones. Do all departments comply? Are you getting, you're getting cooperation and sufficient data responding, submitted in response?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
We have a good rapport with the departments when it comes to this, and I think having these forms and having this process documented on our webpage is a huge help, because people are starting to understand now what we're looking for, for you to get reimbursed, and what, not just based on MGL, but based on, you know, a department and a supervisor's thought process should be when, you know, allowing this. And I haven't seen really much, anything worrisome, you know, other than that example I gave previously, which was kind of funny. But things like, you know, if you're taking, you know, if you fly somewhere and you're taking a taxi to your hotel, you know, what's an appropriate mode of transportation when traveling for work? You know, something like a taxi and Uber, you know, a reasonable, modest amount of money to be spent for travel. I did get a limo ride once that I rejected, which was kind of funny. That, I can't say I can justify reimbursement for unless, for some reason, there was 50 of you guys on this trip and no one wanted to drive.
So, going back to an issue of, pardon me, an issue of attending a conference where a flight is required, would it not be simpler to say, if you're attending something in Atlanta, Georgia, you figure out the round-trip airfare from Boston to Atlanta, and then if someone chooses to take time to visit their parents in Huntsville, Alabama, or Orlando, they would only be reimbursed for the amount of the round-trip airfare from Brockton to the location of the conference and back, instead of worrying about all of the other, well, you took a few extra days and you flew back from somewhere else, but you didn't have any business in that other location, but you were on your own time? I mean, wouldn't that simplify it to just say, look, here's the amount?
It would, it would. And if something stood out to us and was hard to understand just from an auditing perspective, that's when we would shoot an email, or we'd make a phone call, just say, what happened? Okay. Even something like that, just sort of explaining what I did. You know what, I actually ended up doing this, but then I extended it for a couple of days to go see some family. But the reimbursement would be based on me flying back from where the conference was, something like that. Yeah, I mean, it's all workable, it's just a matter of everyone understanding...
Thank you.
Kind of what's expected.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Madam Auditor. Now, I had one question going back to more of the in-state travel, in-city travel specifically.
Yep.
Do, does the office ever sort of arbitrarily pull one of those and check a couple, you know, bits of math? Like, you know, somebody went from the Wendy's on Main Street near, near West Bridgewater, and then they went up to Gowles on North Main Street. Does anyone ever, once in a while, just pull that up and they've listed, you know, this many, you know, this point, this miles, but it's really something different? Is that ever, like, I know it's kind of small potatoes, I know it's not a lot.
Yeah. We definitely do the math.
Yeah.
We make sure the math maths correctly. I mean, at some point, though, there needs to be some form of an honor system in here. If they're not listing the street address of McDonald's, and they're just listing that they went to so-and-so's house here for this inspection, this building there for that one, we really have no realistic way of knowing.
Right.
And, you know, it would be too, you know, not to say that it's not important, but it would be too cumbersome on the staff to...
Small amount of money, small amount of distance, yeah.
Yeah.
And just, curiosity really came into my head, I was like, I wonder if that ever gets looked at.
Yeah, but again, that's why, you know...
Right.
Making sure that departments are itemizing everything and we're really seeing a good, like, chunk of meat in terms of making up this mileage reimbursement makes us feel more comfortable that this is actually what's going on.
Right.
You know, if it's too, itemized as going to two places, and you want to be reimbursed for mileage of, like, 40 miles within Brockton, then that's going to raise a red flag for us. Where'd you go? Where'd you go? That doesn't make any sense, you know what I mean? We watch out for stuff like that. It's not just the math, it's not just the ticking and tying of auditing, it's the rationale, does this make sense?
Fair enough. All right. If we don't have anything else for travel and training, thank you again. Might as well get to answers to questions asked at the Accounts Committee meeting from February.
Sure. Pull that up. So, there were a couple of questions that I wanted to bring up, or rather, a couple of answers I wanted to provide for you. I believe it was Counselor, I'm sorry, Chair Lally that brought up in warrant P-25078, PO number 13550157, there was a question about a $2,000 payment for an AM radio show. So, given the fact that I didn't have access to the accounting system at our last meeting, I finally now can pull up the bill and let you know that that was, oh, gosh, I'm looking at the wrong one, one sec, that was a grant payment for the Cultural Council. Just give me one moment. Here we go. So, the Cultural Council uses grant funds to sort of run these programs throughout the city, and this was one of them. They were advertising for this event. Girls' Esquire, some kind of a show. Lady Nike Ministries is the name, and this is the form that they have to fill out with us to get reimbursed, the Cultural Council here in Brockton. And then we would need to be provided with, before I sign, I check to see what kind of invoices support the request to use the grant funds. So, it was an event, and they were paying this vendor.
Oh, to help put, so it wasn't radio, it was to help, help plan the event?
Yeah.
Interesting. Okay. Counselors, anything on this?
No.
Thank you.
There was another question about EZ Pass payments...
Yes.
...that I wanted to dive into. So, I ran a year-to-date report, and the total payments we made to the Commonwealth of Mass for EZ Pass, in FY '25 thus far, is around $108. So, it was pretty much comprised of mostly the Fire Department and a couple of other departments, I think Public Property was one of them, but there are instances sometimes where, I'll just use the Fire Department as an example, where, you know, our fire chief, our deputies, and so on and so forth, are part of boards, and it's part of their job function, and they do a lot of traveling outside of Brockton throughout the state to be on these boards, in particular, the Mass Fire Academy, the Fire Chiefs Association of Massachusetts, the Fire Prevention Officers of Massachusetts, so on and so forth. We're driving official vehicles with blue plates, and in the past, we never got billed for passing the tolls with EZ Pass because they were authorized vehicles, they were allowed to pass through, and now that the tolls are gone, that's not really an option anymore. So, everyone's getting sort of flagged and billed for this. But I can say that we do confirm that this is official sort of business as it relates to the departments who are paying these EZ Pass bills, and departments do make an active effort to try to avoid the tolls if need be, but in some cases, it's just almost impossible since we're traveling on major highways and there's almost a toll now on every highway, so. There are no, no one has a transponder, there's no account at EZ Pass with the Commonwealth, it's just simply a matter of traveling for business and us getting flagged now.
And we never got it before, because when there was someone in the booth, they'd let the official vehicle go.
Right. They can see the blue plates as they're coming, and they just pass them right through.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Things change.
Counselors, any questions on...
No.
Makes a lot of sense. Thank you, Madam Auditor.
You're very welcome. This last one, apologize, I don't have written down the warrant was in, but it's a question about a payment made to Bay State Restaurant from our prior council, I'm sorry, Council Committee meeting, and this was an ARPA expenditure, I believe it might have been Counselor Farwell's question.
Yes.
An ARPA expenditure to pay for the new Council on Aging's kitchen.
Okay, yep.
And I have it up right here on your screen, so everyone can see it.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
That's fine. It's a very well-run business, local.
Yeah.
Excellent products down there, so that's great.
And that's what I've got for you thus far, and thank you for your patience in my gathering this information for you.
And what about the other ones that we questioned in February?
And what about the other ones that we questioned in February?
I'll have to get to those, and hopefully we can address those at the next meeting, if that's okay.
Okay. If you would just let us know, I'll know to bring the folder with me.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm planning on having sort of answers to outstanding questions be a standing part of our agenda. Just so as the answers come in, we're going to keep asking questions, the auditor's going to keep looking for answers. As they come in, we can have that sort of built in for an update. All right. That covers what the auditor has for us for outstanding questions. Counselors, would anyone like to start on the warrants?
Why don't you start?
Hold on, all right.
Counselor Castro, you said? Oh, Counselor Farwell.
All right, let's, uh... Warrant number P-25105, page nine at the top, BAMZ slash helpline, $15,000 paid to date. That was very active back many years ago, and I did not realize we still had a helpline, so if you could look that up.
Do you have a PO number?
Yes, it's PO, oh, let me see. Looks like it's 109-6022? Or 109-6023? One is for five, one is for $10,000. $15,000 year-to-date paid.
What page was that on? I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, say that again?
What page was that on?
That was on page nine of warrant P-25105. Pardon me, right at the top.
Okay, so these were CDBG grant funds, and this is a bill from the City Planner's Office. So we're using grant funds to pay for this.
I, I, I mean, I, what professional services, what, why would the, why would the Planning Department, I wonder, need the helpline? Just seems a bit odd expenditure for that particular office.
It says to support housing stability.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
It says on the invoice to support housing stability.
Assist with referrals and dispensing funds. Helpline staffing to assist callers with requests, referrals, and dispensing funds to support housing stability. It just seems like something that would go through the Brockton Housing Authority or some other agency, huh?
Yeah, an interesting department, you're saying, to carry it.
Yeah, it's an interesting...
So the CDBG funds were formally...
Right.
...utilized mostly by the Brockton Redevelopment Authority, and we brought that in-house.
Okay.
Under the City Planner's Office.
All right.
So a lot of that work is now being done by Rob May and his team.
Okay, that, now that makes perfect sense. Thank you. Let me go on. And I realize this next one will, will be so redundant, I almost don't like to bring it up, but Amazon.
What warrant?
This is on page seven, warrant number P-25105. And I'm just going to mention the, pardon me, the year-to-date. I think it's even higher on some of the other documents.
It is.
$684,348 with Amazon. Instructional surprise, instructional surprise, driver ed office. At some point, Mr. Chairman, I just would like to find out who has authority to call or contact Amazon, order goods or services, and then track the delivery of those goods and services to ensure they're going where they should be. Because, number one, there should be an inventory of these things, because some schools may want to share something that's purchased through Amazon. One school might want to share what they have with another school if the other school is in need. But, you know, we're getting up to 684, I think almost $700,000, and the fiscal year is not over yet, so...
It should go through purchasing or procurement, one singular, yeah.
And if there are issues, if we have a contract with WB Mason, if there are things that can be purchased through WB Mason, we should do so. But it seems like every meeting I raise this, you know, probably end up raising it again because we've got to get an answer to, I mean, look at this, page after page after page of medical supplies and, well, the auditor has...
They've got firefighting supplies on here, too.
Yeah, the auditor has heard me before, so facility maintenance, I have no idea what that would refer to. And these are public documents. I mean, the public deserves to know where the money is going, so...
Well, who would make a policy on this? Would that come from the mayor? Would it come from counsel?
No, I, well, they're in the, I believe they're in the process of hiring a purchasing and procurement officer at the schools, am I correct?
No, they hired someone. They started in April.
They have hired someone?
Yes.
They have. I'm not sure if it's a director or an agent, but there is someone who's been placed.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the question to the School Department, because I'm going to assume most of the money comes out of their, their funds?
Their general fund, yeah.
Who is tracking? Who authorizes which persons to order? And who tracks delivery to make sure that the deliveries are going to the municipality? They're not going to someone's house. And I'm not saying they are, I'm just saying we should have a system in place that makes sure that doesn't happen.
Right. So when it comes to deliveries, I have made it clear many times with AP staff throughout the city that all deliveries for supplies need to be delivered to a public building.
Yeah.
We're not, where it kind of comes into my realm, and where we're able to catch things is if, you know, you did mention this, Counselor Farwell, when someone's buying supplies off of Amazon and they use their own card and they're trying to get a reimbursement from us, and we do look at the delivery address. And if it goes to their home, we reject it. Because if you're ordering something for work, for, you know, what have you, I can't justify why you would need it delivered to your home. So it's definitely still a work in progress, but there is traction on our end when it comes from my office. Terms, again, people understand that.
Okay.
We can't be the only ones looking at this as well.
No, I agree. All right, let's go to warrant P-25105. This is actually on page one, I don't know how I got out of sequence here. And it's, uh, looks like it's purchase order 804-15152. It's ADAC, A-D-A-C Incorporated, it's $2,000, and all it says is Other Contract Services. How would I have any inkling of what Other Contract Services are?
It's the object code that they use.
Maybe we ought to delete it.
Well, I think that it's...
We can't, per humus.
We've dove, we've dove deep on Other Contract Services. It's, uh, it doesn't sound great. It's very tricky. I think maybe we can refine some of the more common Other Contract Services to more things that they could input, but it definitely is something that, you know, when I look through the warrants, I'm looking, you know, I highlight a lot of Other Contract Services questions, say, hey, what are we doing?
There are definitely more detailed object codes that could be used by clerks.
Could be.
Yeah. So this was a School Department payment. It was paid for by grant funds.
Yeah.
And it is for Title I services. Looks like it's some kind of professional development.
Half-day professional development.
Introduction to multi-tiered systems of support.
Yeah.
Pretty good for a half-day.
If they had put down professional development, we probably would not have had a, had an issue with $2,000, so...
Well, but what was interesting, would you go back to that page? It says, "Bill to the Public Schools in Care of Sacred Heart School in Waymouth." Why would that be?
I think the, and I can't speak for the School Department, but from what I recall, with the Title I services, they've got folks, vendors who travel to service Brockton kids at other schools outside of the district, like Sacred Heart. And the actual payments need to come from the school district that the student resides in, as opposed to the school that the student's going to, which is why the bill needs to be addressed to BPS here and not Sacred Heart in Waymouth, or rather, billed to.
So it's to help a student, a Brockton resident who's a student at a school in Waymouth?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, next one, page 97, warrant number P-25100. And the purchase order is 109-5279. This is another Other Contract Services. The name of the company is The Throne Depot. So I looked up the company, and I think it's a porta potty company. But it, I, it's, we've paid them $760 year-to-date, and I'd like to know which department has The Throne Depot on call here.
I'm sorry, 109-52...
109-5279.
That might be the public safety building.
Well, there are others on here that I thought probably would be that, but...
What warrant is it?
P-25100.
Okay. And what page was that? I'm sorry.
Ninety-seven.
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 It's only $760 to date, but I, when I saw the Other Contract Services, that was the reason for my curiosity.
Given the company's purpose, Other Contract Services might be preferable in this setting.
You mean Munis doesn't have an entry for porta potty rental?
An object code for porta potty rental?
I'm teasing.
I'm sorry, one moment. Okay, so this is a date range of about a good month. It's from Parks and Recs. Grant funds did pay for this.
I'm sorry, grant funds?
Grant funds, yep. There was an event.
March 31st.
I can inquire with Tim Carpenter about that, with what the event was.
Event rental, event service. Well, it's got to be more than one event because it's...
Oh, it looks like it's two. Oh, no.
Well, if it's $90 a, if it's $90 per unit and they've expended $760, so...
I can definitely follow up.
To date?
But now, just as a point of inquiry, since you have a question on this, why would we just push that through? And not have the Department Head or the PAC Department submit more information?
True. The problem is, is that we play close to 8,000 bills a month.
Yeah.
And...
We don't have the staff.
We don't have the staff.
We don't have the staff.
We don't have the resources to do the constant back and forth and why, what's this for and what's that for. And that's where we need the department's help. In making sure that when you're giving us stuff, that it's valid and that, you know...
You know, ideally...
For this exact reason, if it's going to get pulled, we can explain it.
Ideally, if we had the staff, you could segregate the different departments, and you would have this employee handle DPW, and this employee handle Police and Fire, and then another employee handle PACs, Recreation, and some of the other, pardon me, smaller departments. But I know you do the best you can, and I appreciate it. Hopefully, we'll reach a point someday where we do have at least more staffing.
I would love that.
We'll never have adequate staffing, but we'll have more staffing.
I'm always a fan of getting more folks in my office, but yes, you're right.
All right, so let's go on to page 94. Again, it's P-25100. And this is for 109-4978, Sid Weiner and Son. 109-4978, we've paid $7,889 year-to-date. It's listed as technical instruction. For this particular payment is only $341, but I looked up Sid Weiner and Son, and it's a chef's warehouse company in Bedford, Massachusetts, so...
It's food, isn't it?
I don't know. It's, it's...
There it is, down the bottom.
Sid Warner, yep.
Yeah, Sid Weiner and Son.
It says BHS next to it.
Yep.
Could be for the kitchen in there.
Says technical instructional.
All right, so this looks like it was some kind of a culinary... All right, so this looks like it was some kind of a culinary lesson for the kids at BHS. It was paid out of the school's general fund. They're paying for supplies for culinary class.
They were making salad.
Well, that's, that's what it says. I, I mean, I, well, they're, they're getting close to the 10,000, so. I mean, seriously, is that, is that what this is for? Is it teaching them to make salads?
Fine Arts Cafe.
I know that they make a mean guacamole, those kids.
There we go.
I almost was asked to be a judge on a panel.
Oh, wow.
Sort of sad that I missed it. (laughing).
All right, let's go to, uh- Well, this one, I'm not sure of. This is, this may be some, this is, I, well, it's, it's, uh, well, the vendor number is 299-59. The, the different, uh, purchase orders are 109, let's just go 109-5030.
What's the number next to that?
Page number 93, and it's warrant P25100.
What's the number next to the 109?
What's the number next to the 109?
Right. The one to the right of it.
Oh, 5030. And the reason I brought this up is it, this is a bill that precisely stops at $10,000, which means that on another dollar, you'd need a contract. So I'm, I'm just wondering if we have a contract with this particular-
I'm sorry, what was the, um, payment amount?
The amount is $10,000.
Oh, I see.
There's, there's three invoices.
Three invoices and they add up to, just absolutely to the dollar, 10,000, which is $1 short of requiring a contract and-
Well, I think it's one, is it $1 short or $1 too far?
Uh, I, I defer to the auditor on that one.
It's for sped transportation.
Yeah.
Three entries are the same date.
Sped costs are exempt from 30B.
Right.
I'm sorry. 3235325. Okay. Okay, so this is coming out of the general fund for the school department.
Transportation, yeah?
It's transportation for, um, special ed kids.
Yep. Is any indication if there's a contract or?
Uh, given that it's exempt from 30B and that they're still trying to sort of rein in transportation costs, um, this would be something that is part of our action plan.
Oh, they're still claiming that transportation is exempt from, I mean, that, that they don't have to have a contract?
Sped transportation.
No. It's a matter of for them getting caught up with the contracts and getting that finalized.
But, but it's in progress.
It's in progress, yeah.
Oh, that's fine. That's, I, I understand.
There's no pass here. It's, um-
Okay.
It's, it's something that's part of the action plan and they're working on it.
All right, we're still on P25100. We're on page 91. P25100, page 91, and we're going to look at 109-5176. 109-5176. And it's only $426, but it says MS miscellaneous other charge. Other charge for what?
Okay.
These are small amounts, Mr. Chairman and Counselor Nacastro, but I do think by looking at these small amounts, we have a greater opportunity to provide some level of accountability. So I'm, I'm not saying $426 out of a half a billion dollar budget is a, is a budget buster, but, but nevertheless, it's taxpayers' money and-
Well, I don't know if you noticed, but the entry for invoice says March 11 to April 16 volleyball.
Yes. But having seen miscellaneous other charge, these, these anecdotal comments, I, I'm not inspired by them.
Yeah, and it says A, ATH, athletics.
Middle school official pay voucher.
So this is like intramural volleyball? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this came out of the school's general fund.
She must be a, a coach or a, a ref.
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you. We can, we can proceed. Let me go on, uh- While I'm flipping through the pages, uh, counselors, there is one thing that always bothers me, and that is we, we get the names and we get the amounts of the people, uh, we get the names of the people and the amounts for, um, excise tax reimbursements because people either sold their vehicle or, or it came off the road. And yet, on one of these, uh, one of these documents, we don't get, and we aren't allowed by state law, to know who gets, uh, reductions in their real estate taxes. And I've always thought that was wrong. I, I always thought that people should know who was applying for, uh, a reduction in their real estate taxes and what we do to verify whether that's true or not. And that's another issue that we, I think we need to work with our legislative delegation about. It just, it just seems to me that, uh, there's a potential for abuse in any community if you hide the information about who's getting a real estate reduction. Just my personal opinion, but, uh, I've always felt that way.
Who gets a reduction other than for an abatement?
You'd have to say you apply for an abatement.
That's what it is. It's an, it's an abatement, but-
It's, it's an abatement. It's just the question of, uh, you know, you can apply for an abatement and nobody sees that you've done it.
Yep. It's completely secret. We have, we, you can't even judge the efficiency of the assessor's office because you can't see the documents that they're processing. And, and I'm not saying anything is out of sorts. I'm just arguing for more transparency. But, uh, this is page 50. P25099. P25099, page 50, Tremblay's Bus Company. Let's just go with 109-4352. 109-4352. I'm just wondering what type of, of transportation they're providing. Given our bus fleet and year-to-date is $123,860. And it may be private special ed, I don't know.
I highlighted that one, too. It says private special ed.
Well, it's, it says private SEP or whatever that-
OOD is out of district.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So I'm gonna guess that's probably all part of transportation.
Yeah, it's got the transportation marker on it.
So this is, has been paid out of the school's general fund.
Okay. Okay, uh-
It's transporting some kids.
Yeah, that's, must be the number of trips and, okay. All right, per day, per day. All right, thank you. Uh, page 48, P25099. I don't think we covered this before. If we did, forgive me, but, uh, 109-4486. 109-4486. And it looks like we are paying solar emission for electricity in the amount of year-to-date $1.7 million. This particular invoice payment is 111 grand, but I just want to see what, what we have for documents on solar emission, too, for electricity, as opposed to the usual electric companies, uh, providers.
So this is the school bill out of the general fund.
Says Project Thatcher Street landfill, energy produced.
I can get you more information on this.
Do you, have you seen this before? I mean, I-
I have. I just don't recall the exact details again, but I know it's something that our external auditors ask for and look at. So I'll get that information for you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, let me just, I think I'm winding down here, folks.
So we're finished with that one?
I am. I, I-
Yeah.
Colleagues, I-
Okay.
Uh, I, I'm sorry, I have one more.
Oh, fake me out.
I know. It's, uh, this is-
Warrant?
Warrant, P25099.
Okay.
Page 13. And it says Parker Professional Driving School. Year-to-date is $36,400. Let's just do 109-4436.
I know what that is.
You do?
Do you want me to say it? Okay. The Brockton Adult Program through Community Schools got a grant to teach people combination of English and then to school them to get their CDL, commercial driving license.
Okay.
And so, um, I actually inquired about this bill because, um, the school is partnering, partnering with Parker Professional Driving School, and they had piled up a bunch of bills to be paid since December or January that weren't paid because the documentation was not correct.
Okay.
So I checked on this a few weeks ago after I went there, and this is what I learned, that it was going to be on this warrant and going to be paid around April 15th. And it was.
Very good.
So that's for that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nacastro.
Thank you. So now I'm doing your job, Irene. A moment.
You were so quick on it, I was gonna have you race.
Honestly. It's, well, isn't it amazing I knew about it? Okay, so warrant 099, page 2, Allied Waste Services. The, the amounts are small, relatively speaking, for vehicle repair and maintenance, building and grounds repair. Excuse me, the year-to-date is 7.2 million. And so I know that we have a contract with Republic or the city, so why are we paying Allied Waste 7.2?
Dumpster at the Brockton Rocks. This did come out of the general fund for public property.
And would that, would, is that for both? Both entries are for the dumpster at the rocks?
That's what this says. Let me go back.
It's Rock Stadium.
Mm-hmm. What's the date on this? This one's dated March 25th.
Allied Waste Services might- I'd have to look at the W9. There might just be, um, two business names for Republic. They can have subdivisions. Let me go back. Allied Waste.
All of these are signed by a department head, though, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Let me do some digging and try to see why, who Allied Waste Services in relation to,
Republic.
In relation to Republic.
Okay. Thank God that would be so-
I needed W9 somewhere and we found a hot one.
Okay. So that's the first one. And then on the same warrant, page 4, um, American Alarm and Communication. And what I wanted to ask is, the numbers aren't very high, but I saw there were, the entry is for security slash fire control. And I noticed that there are a couple of different security entries throughout these warrants. And so I just wondered, well, what is this for and do different buildings have different companies? And do different buildings have different companies? And would it make sense to batch this kind of service? You know, and have it be the same company throughout the city?
So this particular PO was paid by public property. It was out of the general fund, which makes sense.
I think so.
Elevator inspections. Oh. At the library.
Elevator test with associated elevator.
So if there are various. I, I agree. It would probably service any elevators in any city building.
And the nine hundred dollars, according to the invoice, was all for labor.
Probably a technician that goes out and tests it.
Mm-hmm. So we'll leave it at that?
Yeah, I can do, I can find some more information for you on that.
Okay.
And see if there's an overall contract.
Okay. And then on page six of the same warrant, up at the top, we paid an employee in the Department of Health for Amazon reimbursement. And the description was medical supplies and drugs.
I might actually already know what this is before I. So let me just make sure.
You saw me coming.
Yep. This one I know. So it says on the top of page three.
Page six.
Six. At the top. Yep. I already know what this is. I just want to double-check. Okay, so the Board of Health had to store some vaccines. And there's a special kind of refrigerator that they needed to order off of Amazon to store them properly, some kind of degree situation. The employee did have the refrigerator delivered to their home. And I did end up addressing it with the department head that, you know, I'll cover this given the fact that we're trying to just store vaccines and keep them potent for who we need to give them, help, help out with.
So she delivered it?
This would need to be delivered to City Hall or a city building next time. It couldn't go to someone's home.
So she delivered it to her home and she paid for it herself?
And she got reimbursed, yeah.
But, but the unit is here at City Hall?
Yes.
And this is a special case?
Right.
Because of the nature of the item?
Right. We had the vaccines. We needed the fridge. It was a special kind of fridge and we needed to have it fast.
Yeah, it says temperature data logger monitor with sensor and alarm.
And we did raise the question about using WB Mason. This was not something that they had.
Right.
Yeah.
Sure. Boy, Amazon really sells everything, don't they? Okay. Next one. Page seven of the same warrant, the first entry at the top. Beautiful Blessings LLC. The description is other contract services, two hundred dollars.
Okay, this was paid for with grant funds for the library system. It was, it was an author talk event, some kind of event at, um.
The library.
The, um, public library, yeah. So we're paying a vendor.
Will you just pick, bring up the page with the description of it? It says author talk in big letters.
Down one.
Go down one more. Thank you. Okay. And then the next one is. Page nine. Same warrant. Brockton Police Details. They're just under five hundred thousand dollars. There are three entries here. So we pay for details?
So the library was paying for a detail.
Who did? The library?
The library, yeah. There was an event.
By the way, there is no Beautiful Blessings LLC in the Massachusetts Secretary of State's office. There is a Beautiful Blessings LLC in Connecticut, which is a childcare agency, according to what I just looked up. What?
All I've got is just a detail of the main branch for. Looks like a two-day event, but I can find out if you want about what event it was.
And it was in March? Three-ten to three-twelve. So that was during the week. And does that come out of the library's budget?
It does.
Okay. And the next one is the same warrant, page twelve. CDW Government Inc., remit. Data processing equipment, twenty-six thousand dollars. And the year-to-date is three hundred eighty-four thousand dollars.
So we do have a contract with them, with IT. Just. Or it's DPW, I forget who. Page twelve. So this is coming out of the IT department's general fund. I, I can't say I, I know what this is exactly. A carbon black renewal. I can ask Ted.
Okay.
What that means.
Yeah, just because the year-to-date is a lot.
Yep.
If it's a software.
You think it's software or hardware?
Software, if it's a subscription.
Okay. And the next one is on page fourteen. Conley Helen. Other contract services.
How much year-to-date?
The year-to-date is just under nine thousand. And the two invoices listed, one says HS High School. And the other one says PP HSA. And there are a number of entries in here where the invoices say PP HSA, and I don't know what that means.
Yeah, I have that marked as well for definition.
So this is for the school department. This is grant-funded. Head Start Administrator Preschool Partnership Initiative Grant.
So it's for Head Start at the Payne School?
Mm-hmm.
I thought the Payne School was now the Promise Academy.
I'm not sure. They could have changed the name. Not changed the name, rather, on the paperwork.
Mm-hmm.
It's. I don't really need that, but.
Okay. I highlighted some in-state travel if it was over five hundred dollars. This, there's one on the same page, page fourteen. And the invoice says March twenty-twenty-five mileage. And it's for, well, it was for a hundred and nine ninety, but the year-to-date was six twenty-three forty-nine. And I just wondered what was the detail? Because that's, um. At seventy cents a mile, that's about thirty-nine miles a week.
Mm-hmm.
And it's kind of interesting because, yeah, that's fine. Okay, different names are listed.
So this is coming out of school's general fund?
Right.
She travels from school to school.
Yeah, if I could make a guess, it would be a specialist.
It says for sped.
Yeah.
Sped-related services. Okay. Just write that down, sped. Okay. And then I have on page eighteen of the same warrant, the first full entry to Easton Spring. And there are other entries for Easton Spring on the other warrants that we have tonight.
Easton Springs supplies us with our water in the offices.
So that's Simpson Springs?
Easton Two.
It was.
Gee, that's interesting, though. Simpson Spring is contaminated. I wonder where they're getting the water from?
Yeah, I think they closed down at Easton Spring. I don't know if they get their water actually from Easton.
Oh, well, one of them's, no, it's not. It's something else. Oh, this is my bill. Well, the water's not contaminated because I drank it today.
Well, you're still alive to tell the tale.
Sorry.
You're still alive to tell the tale. I, I would be interested to know where they're getting it from, though. I can look online.
Doesn't Polo Spring operate out of that place in Easton?
No, Simpson Spring does.
Well, they did.
They did. CDBA Simpson Spring on the invoice. I wonder where they're getting the water from?
Me too.
Now that I've told you, right?
And I wanna know.
Well, I think that's a fair question. You know. So you can, do they have a contract with the entire city? Or you get your water wherever you want in your department?
You can get your water wherever you want. I can see if there's a contract for this. I can see if there's a contract for this.
How would you tell from this page whether there is a contract?
You couldn't. It would have to be attached here.
Okay.
Which leads me to believe that there probably isn't.
Okay.
And I don't know how much they've been paid out.
They are listed on other warrants.
Yeah.
Oh. They're listed on the warrant 100.
What's the year-to-date?
On warrant 100, the year-to-date is $4,000.
Okay.
Three entries.
Are your screens up?
No. Our screens mirror the screens over there.
My laptop's down.
So it's the same amount year-to-date?
Nick is still out there.
Are we offline?
The meeting's still on.
Oh, my battery's low.
It's not a problem with BCA, it's a problem with the laptop.
That's not fun, considering I charged this all day.
But it's plugged in?
Uh-uh. This is the plug to show it on the screen there.
Oh. Uh-oh, we may be winging it.
I think we lost our juice.
Well, we'll write down the POs, and we'll have a very active answers-to-questions session later. Oh, looks like we're back.
Let's see if this works.
Very low.
I don't think we have a... I don't know what a power supply is. I don't know. The cord's in the laptop bag. We probably need an extension cord.
Do we have extension cords?
Need to move closer to the outlet.
Counselors, I'm going to call a brief recess while we attempt to figure out if we're going to continue with the laptop this evening.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna turn the microphone.
Thank you.
All right, counselors, we are back, and I believe the laptop is alive.
It is.
All right. Councilwoman Castro, I believe you had the floor.
Okay, so we were looking at that Easton Spring entry, and I mentioned that there are other ones. So maybe we'll do some looking into that. I'm thinking about your health, Irene.
Sorry?
I'm thinking about your health.
I know.
Okay, and the next one on page 24 of the same warrant. There's a, the third entry down is a reimbursement for in-state travel, and it says March 25 mileage. It's $2,000 year-to-date, and this one is $327. And I just wondered, where is this person going that they're getting so much mileage reimbursed?
Okay, this is with the school department again.
So I guess it's all local. Looking at the backup. And where do we, where do you presume that the Start location is? The Crescent Street address listed above?
Yeah. I can find out what exactly this employee does.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what is the purpose of travel?
There's probably something stipulated in their contract.
And on the first page that we looked at, no, go down a bit, the handwritten pages. It listed, go down one more. It lists a different address in 02324.
That's Bridgewater.
And the department is attendance.
Right.
So maybe this is the Truant Officer.
It was signed by, I believe, a BPS employee within special ed. So I can find out what exactly this person's doing and why it relates to their job function.
An attendance officer.
Yeah, Truant Officer. But would we reimburse from a place of residence?
Yeah, I mean, if they're starting off their day and they're going straight to another location, not from 43 Crescent.
But you don't reimburse people traveling to work?
No, but if they've got to go to different locations...
Right, so he, if his, if his normal work assignment is at 43 Crescent Street, and he leaves there, the mileage would start from Crescent Street.
Right, but I guess the point is, is that if he's racking up mileage from Crescent Street or his home...
So you're saying his home is outside of Brockton?
Yeah.
East Bridgewater.
He listed an address in East Bridgewater above on that first page we looked at. Yes, that one dated 3/3.
I, having been a state employee with mileage reimbursement, I can tell you that you get reimbursed for leaving your office and then going to a location in your official capacity. You don't get reimbursed for driving to work.
I'll dig into this further and let the committee know.
And I guess if this person drives around to check on students' attendance, then it makes sense that their reimbursements would be to the degree that it is. This was a March mileage.
Mr. Chairman, there's another aspect to this, though, that bothers me. When someone is driving that much in their own personal car, if they get involved in an accident, it's their insurance coverage. And, but, they're an employee of the city, so the city is going to be dragged into...
Liability.
The liability for it. And I'm not saying this gentleman's car isn't absolutely pristine, and it passes all inspections and it's fine. But every time someone drives one of their own personal vehicles in the official, in their official capacity, the city is actually liable. If anything happens, if that person hits anyone, we're going to be liable because they're acting as an agent for us.
Right.
So the alternative is to have a fleet of vehicles?
I, I, I think the upside of it would be to, A, they could, if he has an employment contract, they could give him a stipend for use of his vehicle, if that's what they want to do. Or they could assign him a, assign him a school vehicle.
Well, there certainly are public school vehicles meandering about. Does this person have a contract, or is he an employee?
Looks like he's an employee.
It does.
I'd have to find out. I mean, if they're using the trial reimbursement form, then it would be an employee.
Okay. Well, I'd like to know more.
Yeah, this isn't billed as part of service.
And Madam Auditor, we would generate a $10.99 for this, correct, at the end of the year? For his reimbursements?
Not for reimbursements.
I'm sorry?
Not for reimbursements.
Not for reimbursements.
No? Okay.
Okay, and the next one is on page 26 of the same warrant. And so we have four entries for Home Depot credit services. And I'm just wondering... And they each have different year-to-dates. You know, amounts invoiced, 15, 20, you know, something like $28,000, almost $30,000 for them all. And we've talked about this before. Who has the cards, and can we consolidate this? Is there some way that we can streamline this?
So there are a lot of departments that have the Home Depot cards. Mostly it's just to grab supplies on the fly, DBW folks, stuff like that. But it is something that should be addressed, just to get an understanding of who has one.
Would that be quarterbacked by your office? I would think so.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely.
And I assume each entry, each invoice entry has to be approved by the supervisor, by the department head?
Yep.
Okay. I would, how would we follow up on this?
I would just send out a mass email, or even bring it up at a department head meeting. And say, I'm trying to get a tally of everyone who's got a Home Depot card and what the scoop is with inventory.
Okay.
Because we should have an inventory for supplies.
Okay. And we'd probably want to do the same thing with the Lowe's cards, because I know there's several of those.
Yeah, yeah. It's just a matter of getting organized and getting departments to understand that, you know...
Okay.
What could segue away from having to use a Lowe's and a Home Depot card is if we see what we're actually buying throughout the year and order it in bulk ahead of time and have it as part of our inventory.
Okay, thank you.
It would actually help our balance sheet a little.
Right, sure. Okay, my next one is on page 30 of the same warrant. In the middle of the page, there's an entry for contractual union dues. And the year-to-date invoiced is $949,000. And this bill is for $82,000 and change. And I'm wondering, what unions does that cover within the city?
That's city workers.
That's, um...
Launa.
Labor is international?
Yeah.
I think that's their contribution to either health or life insurance.
Yeah.
And it's contractual.
Right. That's why it's so much, too.
I was gonna say, they're gonna hit $1 million before the end of the fiscal year. Wow.
Good news is they have a contract.
Right. They have a current contract?
I meant, I was joking about the $10,000 limit.
Oh, right.
Yeah, it's pension dues. It's Launa.
Yeah.
I think it's 1162. It's for our laborers.
Okay. Including police supervisors.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. In the same warrant, the bottom of page 38, excuse me, New England Trauma Services LLC. The description is building slash grounds repair slash M. And the number's not very much, relatively speaking, $460. But the year-to-date is almost $15,000. And I just wondered, what is it for? Why would a company with that name be doing grounds repair here?
It, it's probably train servicing, meaning or replacing. Probably it's buildings, not ground repair. The M is for maintenance.
Train services?
Drain.
Oh, drain services.
Yeah, something gets clogged, or it needs to be cleaned, or... Some repair. Oh, I'm looking at, I'm sorry, I'm looking at New England Drain Services.
Cleanup at City Hall.
Yeah.
This is public property.
Yeah. Just says cleanup at City Hall.
Mm-hmm.
And what was the date on it?
January 2nd of this year? Probably has to do with the...
Maybe one of, after one of those rainstorms when the water came in.
This is, um... Hazardous material cleanup from, it says, it's listing sharps and possibly maybe something left on the stairs by someone who couldn't quite make it to one of Thron Depot's products.
Oh. Oh.
Yes.
They got serum.
Yeah, they have to call somebody special out for those instances. That's not something that, that the custodians would or should.
Yeah, or an ambulance service. Oh. Okay. Oh, how sad. Okay, I understand that one, Irene. Oh, my. So then I'd like to know on page 44. There's an entry for someone, and the invoice is PPB DNA. And I'd just like to know what that means. There are a number of them on this warrant, all to individual people.
Kind of like PP HSA?
Yeah, this one is PPB DNA.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was the amount?
It's the third one down, Reed Cheryl.
You want the PO?
I've got it. Thank you.
So this is paid for out of school grant funds, pay party...
Pay party for Brockton Day Nursery Administrators.
Parity.
Parity. There's an I.
Parity, you're right, it is. It's not very, very easy to see.
Sounds better than pay party.
So what does that mean?
If it was within the grant agreement, they can pay for, they can have this type of expense.
So this is for Brechton Day Nursery to watch children of employees, of, of students?
I can reach out to the school department and see in detail what the grant was used for and what this is.
Okay, that'd be swell. Because it got sent to the person individually.
It'd be their reimbursement.
Right. So let me select this down. Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Initiative. Okay. More information. On page 47 of the same warrant, down at the bottom, second last entry at the bottom, there's another... God bless you. There's another entry for Sid Weiner and son.
That's probably the same.
And Irene, separate from what, you know, making salads and that kind of stuff, I'm just wondering, you and I discussed providing food supplies for a program at the, um, Brechton Adel Day?
Yep.
And I know they sell food. Can that vendor be used to provide food for them? And that's separate and aside from what we're doing tonight, but I just thought I'd mention it.
Yeah.
And by the way, I, I wrote back to the person that had been providing me with detail saying, um... You know, seek information from the, the school's new procurement person, and I haven't heard anything back.
Can't say I'm not surprised.
So I just wanted to mention that. If you would ha, we don't have to do it now. But if you would check the contract to see what they provide.
Right.
Okay. Thanks. I think that's it for that one. Do you, do you want me to stop and give you a turn, Jack, since it's 8:05?
Um, we'll let you, we'll, we'll let you do it in one, one quick hit.
One swoop? Okay.
See if we can, see if we can hit a, hit a speed round, because we're, uh...
Yeah.
We are at the two-hour mark.
Okay. Um, now I'm on warrant 100. And so, let's go to page 68. And the entry is for Chatterboxes LLC.
Mm-hmm.
And the year-to-date, or the, this amount is just under $8,000, but the year-to-date is $41,000.
Mm-hmm.
And I just wondered, what is that for?
Yep, so, I'll pull up the bill, but I know what Chatterboxes does. This is more than likely feeding therapy on an IEP for a child at BPS.
This has come up.
Kind of like speech therapy?
Feeding therapy.
Oh, feeding therapy.
Actually, kids, kiddos...
Okay.
A lot of kiddos have a hard time eating solids if they're on the spectrum.
Yes.
And Chatterboxes specializes in that.
Okay.
This, this vendor has come up before, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. It's, they're very typical, um, within school districts and school systems.
Okay, so do they go to the site where the children, they go to the school?
Yes.
And work with them?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that makes sense. Thank you. And then on page 70, in the middle of the page, Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Education. And the amount is just under 20 grand, but the description is unexpended grant funds.
That was more than likely us getting a grant and not expending the funds and being required to send them back.
So the year-to-date is $45,500. That's all money we sent back, because we didn't use it all?
If we're counting a check.
That's all money that was sent to the Department of Education.
That we returned?
But not clear. The $20,000 is unexpended. That's what's listed as the description for that, that payment. We can, we can ask to see an itinerary of what we've paid to the DOA.
The invoice says IEP for this one. But you're saying it could be for all different things?
Well, it could be. The, the vendor has a year-to-date of $45,000.
Right.
I mean, it would be reasonable to assume, um, that, you know, while the school department is having things, you know, cleared out, cleaned up, that they're dealing with one or two, more than a few, uh, unexpended grants, but it's not clear at a glance.
If I were to make an educated guess, that's exactly what happened.
This is all grants.
And this is all stuff that's being improved and worked on currently at BPS.
Right.
To be tracking these grants, tracking these funds, you know? We've given a lot of guidance, you know, in particular our assistant auditor with grant managers over at school and running reports and showing funds that, you know, not, are not just running up deficits, but also, you know, have surpluses. Are you spending this? You know, what's going on, stuff like that.
So I should assume from this one that we sent $20,000 back because we didn't spend it?
Yeah.
The auditor...
You don't know which one it was for?
It can probably be determined. From, from the auditor's statement, it sounds kind of like we can assume, we can assume that it's...
I wouldn't know the exact grant or anything of that nature, and I can ask.
Could we get for the next meeting, uh, sorry to step into your line of questioning, Counselor, but could we get...
You are.
What can I say?
Lots.
I'll, just one time, just one time. I, I can still gavel you on the chair. So, could we get a list of, um, basically what makes up that $45,000 year-to-date? And, you know, if it is grants, then, you know, what, what they were?
Yeah.
Thank you, that'd be swell. And then on the next page of that warrant, page 71. A little under the middle of the page, the vendor is Paul F. Kotumis. The descriptions are other contract services.
Mm-hmm.
The amount of this payment was $10,780, but the year-to-date is almost $274,000.
I can answer that.
I can too, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Paul Kotumis and the company that he owns, so I don't know why it goes to him instead of the company or why it's listed as other contract services, uh, but Paul Kotumis is the man who runs DW Golf Course.
Oh, he's the pro?
Yeah, so that's, you know, for his services, for the services of the people he brings on and everything else around that.
Well, I would be interested to know, why is it going to him and not his company?
That's a fair question, and other contract services.
Yes. And they're all dated April 15th. Page 76. Of the same warrant 100. Um, the entry is for father bills in mainspring. The description is other contract services. The invoice is dated February 10. And it's, it's a, it's for $44,619.88. And that's the full amount of this payment and also the year-to-date. So what did we pay for?
Um, I'm having a little bit of an issue with Munis.
I saw that.
Let's try this again.
Do you also have a paper copy there of these warrants?
I do not. And I'm sorry, which page was it?
It's page 76 of the warrant 100.
Thank you. Some ARPA money was used for this project. Manly Housing.
And it was to the attention of Rob May.
Mm-hmm.
And those are federal home funds.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Oh, that's for Manly Street.
Probably more stuff taken over by planning after the BRA.
Yeah.
And that's for the new facility.
Yeah.
So it was funds contributed to that facility on Manly Street, support of housing. So we can't tell what it was used for?
I don't want that. Looks like it's construction.
Yeah. Yes, it does. Okay. I guess we contributed toward that because we had the money.
Mm-hmm.
Or the housing authority had the money. I'm sorry, I meant redevelopment authority. Okay. Page 80, at the bottom. The name is Justice Resource Institute Remit, and all of the entries are for tuition for the SPED program. The amount of the check was $245,000. The year-to-date was, uh, just under $825,000. I don't know anything about the Justice Resource Institute. And I won, I wondered about the number of children that this covered. Is there one entry per child? And they're all dated 4/11. Oh, this is a bad tone.
Yeah, it is.
I think Munis wants to go home for the day.
Mr. Chairman, it, it is a facility for special, particularly those with severe special needs.
Yeah.
And especially discipline or behavioral issues. And it's been, uh, that, the JRI's been in the news in the past regarding some of the interventions that I guess they're authorized to, to do.
Is it the May Institute?
No.
No, no, completely different.
Yeah.
Where is it?
I think it's in Canton, if I remember.
I was about right.
Okay.
I have to apologize to the committee.
If you could find out at some point the number of students.
Yep. I'm sorry, um...
It's okay.
I just think...
So we lost it?
I, I'm just getting nothing.
For the folks at home, Munis is...
I have to start over.
Okay, um, why don't we take down the rest of the POs we have questions about? And we can get them addressed as other answers in the next meeting?
Okay.
So we'll, we'll abandon the laptop for the rest of the evening?
Laptop really does make a difference, though.
It's very helpful, yeah.
It is. Okay. Okay, so on page 82. There's an entry at the top of the page for Creola Fit Queens LLC. Again, the description is other contract services. The amount is $300. And that's also the year-to-date invoiced. Okay.
I had that up as well. It looks like it goes to a GoFundMe. Or the Instagram page does.
Oh, that's interesting. And then, did you get that, Arlene?
I did.
Irene, oh god, listen to me, I'm tired. Page 87. The entry on the same warrant, the entry is for Moonlight Limited. And the description is safety and security. The amount of this payment was $2,600, but the year-to-date is almost $27,000.
Okay.
How will I know? Another one?
I'm writing whatever you are.
So you got Moonlight Limited? Okay, and then on page 96. There's an entry to a person, Corey John Sullivan. For building and grounds repair. And this one was for $2,400, but the year-to-date is $7,500.
Okay.
The PO?
Which one is the PO?
It's okay, I can follow it by the page number.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fine.
And then I'm just gonna give you one more. On page 97. The name is to the stepping... The name is to the Stepping Stones Group LLC. Again, for contractual services. And the amount of this payment is seventy-eight hundred dollars, but the year-to-date is thirty-one thousand five hundred.
Okay.
Thanks, Irene.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Chair?
That's all you got?
Yes. I yield the floor to you.
Wowee. All right, well, I gotta say, going, uh... Going last has its perks, because we've... we've definitely thinned, uh, the amount of questions. This is definitely some stuff to look at there. P warrant, P twenty-five dash one oh five. Page nineteen at the bottom. Hanrahan Consulting LLC. Thirty thousand year-to-date, but listed as other contract services.
Mm-hmm.
What page?
Uh, page nineteen.
Thank you.
P twenty-five dash one oh five. P twenty-five dash one oh five, page fourteen. Easton Children's Museum. Fifteen hundred dollars. Eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars year-to-date. Uh, just... it's listed as other charges. So, you know, just trying to get a little more detail on that, and also... We're not near... we're not the end of the year yet, and if they hit ten, we wanna make sure they have a contract. I assume it's a school expense, but, you know...
And they take the kids over there.
Yeah. Uh, and then the last one I've got that has not been hit yet is... Warrant P twenty-five dash zero nine nine, page fifty-one.
Mm-hmm.
The bottom of the page, United States Conference of Mayors, which is pretty self-explanatory.
Eighteen thousand dollars, isn't it?
Uh, ten thousand.
Oh, okay.
Payment of ten thousand four hundred and two dollars, which is also ten... Which is also what's been paid year-to-date. I do not begrudge memberships, registrations, or subscriptions, but ten grand is a heck of a sticker price. So I just wanted to see if there was any further detail on that that could explain the price.
Okay.
Counselors, any final... Final warrants? No? Okay, any further question or comment?
Do we know when we're meeting next?
Uh, that will be worked out in short order. I'm going to meet with the auditor to get the auditor's availability. I have spoken with the members of the committee about availability as well, but I will follow up... Once I have the auditor's details and we can build a framework for the next series of meetings. I know we talked about, uh, as a subject for discussion in the next meeting, uh, a discussion of, um... CARES Act money and COVID money that has come in throughout.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, all that money from the federal government, from the state, and from the county that came in. What came in, where did it go? How, you know, how did it work out? And, uh, what, if any, was returned? And I know that there's, uh, some CARES Act money that has been deferred, uh, that the schools have to pay back... Or that we have to pay back from the schools.
Right.
Will... I believe the goal is to bring in Troy CFO Clarkson as well... So he can opine on some of the CARES, uh... some of the ARPA money. And so we'll give that a bit of a conversation, talk a little bit more about the auditor's office and, uh... You know, their controls and how they handle things, and we'll review another set of warrants.
Okay.
All right, if there's no other business, I...
I just have...
Counselor Farwell?
Just one last question for the auditor. Between now and our next meeting, would you be thinking about other communities that may have lists of warrants...
Mm-hmm.
Payable that we could look at? I... I'm still convinced that this format is confusing. It's scattered all over the place in terms of what we're paying, amounts, purposes, grants, general fund. And I... I really think we... we're doing a disservice to the council and to the public by not coming up with a better format.
Yep.
And maybe we don't have to reinvent what's being done. Maybe there is some community out there that has developed a better way of listing their accounts payable and... And, uh... and the amounts that are... that are expended, so... But that doesn't have to be the next meeting, but I... I do think in the future, we ought to look at a better format.
Does Cambridge do it like this?
Uh, Cambridge doesn't have...
They don't do this?
No.
Fair enough. All right, well...
Yeah.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you.
Good night.